Everybody, I'd like to welcome you to the April 23rd, 2019 informal work session of the Amiel County Board of Commissioners. It's now 1:31 and we'll go ahead and get started. The first thing on our agenda is Item A, and that's our calendar session. And we use this session to reserve to review the Commissioners' joint schedule if needed. So, Carrie, do you want to lead this one off? Or Ken, you want to lead this one off?
I've passed around the joint schedule for this week to take a look at it. And if there's, if you, if there's an event on there that we need to notice or that's not on the calendar, just let us know. This is what we have on the, for this week.
This week? Got it. One thing I see, Casey, are you going to be Thursday? As a, are you going to be, do you plan on attending the Parkway Committee meeting?
No, I won't be.
Okay, so then I'll be the only one at that meeting. Let's see. And we have the YCTAC, we have the YCTAC, our Trans Advisory Committee at 3 o'clock, 3 o'clock on Thursday, the 25th. So, anything else we have a joint? I know, did you get input from Mary at all yet? We can get hers later, Carrie.
Yeah, she doesn't have any.
Okay, she doesn't have anything, so we don't have anything the rest of this week. So I think that looks at this week. We do have, though, tomorrow at 4 o'clock, Commissioner Kula and I will be at the Ellipsic at the Local Public Coordinating Council, which is already on the schedule. So, Casey, you have anything to bring up for this week? None? You have anything, Carrie?
Just a couple of reminders for next week. Monday's Budget Committee kicks off, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday will be in Budget Committee meetings. The other thing to point out is Carrie is currently working with planning on scheduling, I don't know how many hearings are coming up in May, two hearings in May. So if there are particular dates, if you were planning on taking some time off or might not be available on a Thursday in May, if you could let Carrie know so we can, so we can kind of narrow some dates for getting those hearings scheduled.
What days are those?
Yes, yes, Ken.
Sorry. We have a May 16 hearing we'd like to hold because it's the week prior to the 150 days expiring on two applications. And we had heard that May 16, we were going to only have two Commissioners here. We want to make sure we have those two Commissioners there. We could do it the following week, but we'd probably have to have the appointments prepared and ready to adopt. And we'd rather try to do the hearing the week before than all.
Okay, on the 16th, 16th to May.
I realize Commissioner Olson is out on the 16th.
Yes, I will be, I'll be in Spokane. I'll be in Spokane right now, so we'll have to make sure. You're here? It's okay.
It's open to me, so. All the, all the May days look, look good to me.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie. Hearing nothing else, then we will move on to our work session, Item Number B. And this is time reserved for topics of discussion scheduled for the Commissioners in advance. If a work session is not needed, the balance of the meeting will begin at 1:30. We do have a work session today. We have a work session for review and discussion of our Solid Waste Advisory Committee, or SWAC, bylaws. So Mary isn't here, so Casey, would you like to kick, would you like to kick that one off? Or I can kick it off?
Maybe Ken and Ashley, you feel like you want to come on up?
Ken and Ashley are here. You guys, come on, you guys, here, there, over here, wherever you'd like to be, Ashley. Okay, any update on, then we can start in on the work, work session. Do you like to say anything, go over anything first?
No, I usually come prepared with a whole lot of notes. I really didn't in this case because I'm not sure, you know, what, what to tell you. It sounded like there were concerns that there were, that the present SWAC was industry-heavy, and so they needed to, they wanted to maybe rewrite the bylaws. I saw a suggestion in here of making the bylaws rewritten so that they don't have any industry voting on this. I guess I would just remind the Board that this is an advisory commission and, you know, that if, you know, a segment doesn't feel like they're being heard, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with there being what I would call a minority report. So you'd have the recommendations of the people in the majority, and then if there's some folks that felt strongly enough about an issue, they could forward on, you know, the, what I would call a minority report. I also read there were concerns about whether we, the Planning Department, that, whether Ashley was going to send on all five of the, the resumes of people that have applied. And I checked with her and I said, "That was my, you know, thought that's what we were going to do with the recommendation of the two by SWAC." And she had confirmed to me that's what she had planned to do. So there was no thought in either one of our minds that we were going to, you know, put aside the other three people that had applied, but rather just forward on with the five people that have applied to be on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And with those applications would be the minutes and the discussion by the SWAC members. And it's completely up to the Board, you know, if you'd like to, whoever you'd like to put onto SWAC, and completely up to the Board as to what you'd like to do as far as bylaws. And if I remember correctly, Ashley, at the previous meeting in January, had provided bylaw examples to the SWAC and had suggested, you know, some thoughts of adopting some bylaws. And, you know, they kind of wanted Ashley to do some of that, and I think she rightly so, said, "No, I think this one's up for you guys."
I watched your interaction, and you did great.
Yeah, so, so I, I think it's, it's wide open for whatever the Board would like to do. My suggestion is to look at the SWAC members, appoint two more, and then have them come up with recommended changes to the bylaws, and then review that and see whether or not you agree with the recommended changes.
Okay.
I, I did not mean to steal all of your stuff.
Oh, no, I'm sure. Can I ask you?
It's a work session.
What's the status, then, of the SWAC's bylaws?
At this point, I was hoping to get a full committee before we started assessing those.
Okay, got it, got it. Yeah, I had to leave early.
And is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you covered it all.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, since this is just basically a work, work session, no decisions will be made. A couple of my comments. I pulled up some old documentation. I had first proposed to, proposed to the city administrator back at March of last year. So we're a little over a year now that we take a look at the SWAC, the actual committee, make up the bylaws and how we're done. And here's what I had put down. Then I reemphasized it again in June, and then in October of last, last year is that. It was my feeling that the, number one, I thought the Board was too small because trying to get more than four people here at the Board, even have a quorum sometime, is, is very difficult. So what I proposed is that there should be, and I don't know if they had a copy of what I proposed, Ken, but if.
Was that?
Not yet, that was that one. That, that we should have, and these are just my ideas. And some of these came from Marion County, some of them came from Benton, some of them came from Benton County. And personally, I like Marion County's bylaws very well, that we should have four at-large county citizens, one from business industry representative, one representing waste management, one representing ecology, the Holler, one representing one of our partner organizations such as Zero Waste or something like that. And then the one Commissioner who sits as the liaison to the solid waste with both of the industry representatives not being voted. And the reason I thought that, the reason I thought that is after the last probably year and a half of year meetings, that maybe it's just the representatives of the solid waste, but they, they get pretty hot and they have a tendency to convince the others, especially if there's only two or three others over. That I know the others, such as Jennifer Redmond Noble, says, she said it very well when she says, "It doesn't make any difference what we think," because those two have enough pull that they were gonna, they were gonna say who they wanted on the committee. And I'm not so sure I'm in favor of having those appointed representatives voting members, but that's just my opinion. That the other thing, of course, the liaison wouldn't vote. And the meetings may be, and I think we still have those quarterly, actually, we still have the, the SWAC meetings quarterly, do you remember?
Right now.
We're quarterly. And one of the things that really concerned me, and I've noticed this especially the last year, especially with the industry representatives, I think Dave Larmouth came, come and he has a pretty good report on recycling and everything and what they're doing, but waste management comes up and it's more, very seldom do we ever get any reports from them. He says, "Well, if you," it's, I think Nick Godfrey says, "If you want it, go out and look at the state, they have it." You know, he just doesn't seem to be prepared. And then the whole packet going to the committee, the feeling, my feeling was is that whole packet that goes to the committee should go at least a week early so everybody has time to review the packet. And that should include their reports, and it should include their, the agenda, include any minutes. And then the quorum would just be a simple, if we did not have the industry representatives voting members, then the quorum would be just a simple majority of the voting members. Let me, let me scroll down here. And I think that was it, but I think I'd like to take a look more on how, and then the appointment, the five appointments, I don't know who the five were. I know, I know, I think I know who the two that SWAC, you know, who they said they wanted, who they would like. But it'll go back, and we've had this discussion, not about SWAC, but we've had this discussion several times on other committees, about the way we appoint and the way we advertise committee openings. And we had five, but we might have had 15 or 20, but that's really not, it's more of a word of mouth, it's really not advertised. The average citizen doesn't, a lot of times, doesn't even know that we have advisory committee appointments open because we don't advertise in the news register, we don't really do anything with it. So I'd like to get into a program with all of our committees, and SWAC included, where we, we really put out an advertisement that says we have this meeting open, and we do it enough in advance so that if, whether it fills a blank position, or whether it's a position coming up for renewal, that we give enough of advance to bring that person in, maybe meet with Ashley, meet with Ken, get the purpose of the solid waste committee and get all of that done. So I'd really like to see us work on bylaws and look at Marion County's now that Jan, now that Janitor will talk about Marion County. But look at, look at Marion County's solid waste bylaws, because I, I think they're probably one of the better done in the area. So Casey, turn it over to you.
That, that sounds good. I, I've looked at Marion County's too, which I think you tried to suggest as a starting point for SWAC. And I, I think that would be good. Are you thinking that we would adopt the bylaws for SWAC or that SWAC would adopt them?
Normally, if I remember right, that the, the committee, Christian, does the committee adopt the bylaws and we, I mean, do they recommend the bylaws and as the Commission we adopt the bylaws?
The committee bylaws?
Yeah, for SWAC, the committee bylaws.
No, I believe the committee.
The committee, but then we have to approve, we have to, don't we have to approve as the Commission?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware that there are any SWAC bylaws at the moment.
Oh, yeah, there's some SWAC bylaws.
Well, there's, there's the solid waste ordinance that.
Oh, that's right, because there's, they, that's in the ordinance, it's not in bylaws.
I think you're right.
All my.
Four paragraphs, maybe.
But that's part of the.
Part of this ordinance.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
You know, that's a good point, because I know, I think, Christian, a while back, we discussed this as a group of Commissioners, that some of our committees have bylaws, some of the committee's functions are written in an ordinance, and it depends on what committee is and how it's written. I personally would like to see myself, the bylaws information stripped out of the ordinance and then have their own bylaws for that committee, but that's just, that's just my, that's just my.
So, I mean, the ordinance was, the latest iteration of the ordinance was passed in, in 1997.
So 22 years ago.
At that time, there were nine voting members, and there's a list of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 other folks who could be listed as ex officio members. It was, it was amended the last time that I'm aware of, in 99, to reduce the number from nine to seven. And I believe, if I'm reading this correctly, it's because they're having trouble filling nine positions. So it was reduced to seven. And at that time, it still reflected that only two voting members may be holders of franchises or licenses issued by the Board, and that no franchisee shall vote on any matter in which the franchisee has a direct financial interest. So that's, that language, and then there's a separate section on appointments and how vacancies are to be filled. Those, those provisions are already in the ordinance. There's a section on officers' meetings and minutes. And then is there one other paragraph in there, Ashley, that you think is equivalent to?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, there's 2.5 duties of the committee.
Well, that brings up a good point. Go ahead, Christian.
I mean, I, you know, you could amend the ordinance to reflect.
So the individuals like from the distributor, like waste management, ecology, the, they don't have as individuals of the organization, and they don't have any direct financial impact, but the companies they represent definitely have a financial impact on the decisions that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee makes.
Some, one of the, one of the concerns was that any decision that they vote on will have an effect on.
Effect on, like, waste management or.
Which, I was going to say, you have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's contrary to what the Organ Ethics Commission told us in 2014, where they basically said, in response to direct questions that I posed to them, that there was, it was unlikely that there would ever be an actual conflict of interest because they're an advisory body only.
And for what it's worth.
And if they could vote on the others as well without violating the ethics.
And for what it's worth, when they were talking about rates at the last meeting, they went out of their way to make sure they weren't voting on their.
On the rate change.
Yeah.
And that's in the ordinance, so it's ordinance. Is that particular thing, was like a hackle line or something?
They're not supposed to make a recommendation on their own company's rates, and they, and they didn't. And I did have two people in the audience that expressed concern to me directly that they, they thought they were, and I said, "Let's, let's watch. I think they're not." You know, they, they said they were going out of their way not to, and they, and they did recuse themselves from those votes.
And this opinion says to be in compliance with Oregon Government Ethics Law, they would need to publicly announce the nature of their conflict once, on each occasion at which the issue arises, but then they could continue to participate in any ensuing official actions such as a discussion or vote, then they could participate. So their Ethics Commission is saying that they don't actually have a conflict because of the, the nature of the.
They're an advisory board.
That's interesting. We were talking with the RIAC, so.
Right.
And, and you take it all the way back to the statute, the committee, the county is required to have this committee because we have a regional solid waste disposal facility, right? And the statute only requires that there be a representative, one representative of the permittee on the committee. Amiel County has decided that they want two, but the requirement is really only that there be the one of the permittee.
We've had two industry representatives, but technically we just have one permittee representative.
That's all the statute requires.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the county's chosen to have one from each of our two solid waste providers and franchise workers.
So I guess.
And to make them voting members, which.
Casey, since this is the work session, and I'll turn it over like Ashley and Ken, I mean, what, what action? I mean, it's evident from a lot of people you talk to on SWAC and a lot of people that aren't on SWAC, that SWAC does, for whatever reason, it just doesn't seem to be working like it should.
Yeah.
And I do not say that I, I don't know necessarily the answer.
Well, I, I do think that 1998 was, was the last time it was amended, and I'd like to clarify that I graduated from high school right about that time. So I, I like to think that things have changed and that I can see that there's a lot more interest in SWAC and in solid waste in the county. And I, I would be interested in thinking about increasing the number of members, but holding the current language in place that they're, that they can vote when it's not their thing. Because I know that we have lots of interest from the community. I mean, we have a recycling organization that we didn't have at the time.
Yeah.
So maybe one way to do it.
Casey, I think the, the other part of that, the other way to do it then, is if we don't want to go down the bylaws route, that's fine. And since it is in, since it is in ordinance, maybe we should ask the legal counsel and ask Ken and ask Ashley, Ken, to look at the ordinance and see how we can make, bring the ordinance up 20 years from 20 years ago, and what changes are there, changes that need to be made to the ordinance or recommended changes.
So are you, are you talking about a revision or a review of the entire ordinance, which is?
No, just the part, just the part that refers to SWAC.
Just the SWAC.
Just the SWAC part.
The three or four paragraphs that we identified.
Yeah.
Regulate the operations of the committee.
I don't know how Ashley feels about this, and I should address this to Ken too, but I've been talking with folks at Lindfield and at high schools about advisory committees, and I would love to see if it's possible to have a student position also on SWAC. Because I know there's a lot of interest among students in those solid waste and recycling side of things, so.
Well, they could fit, I guess they could, if they're going to school here full-time, they're not running, they could, they could fill as citizens.
They could, but they can't really guarantee the four, or is it a four-year term?
Three-year term.
It's a three-year term.
Three-year term.
Yeah. That's the one thing that I was worried about, is, well, there's a three-year term on it. And I don't want people to look.
You could always make that a two-year term, do something different.
Right. Yeah, so have like one of those nine perhaps be a student position. I know that we could fill it, that's the reality of it. And it gives them some good experience with meetings and.
I think, I think, Ashley, you've been doing a great job, and matter of fact, I really liked the job you're doing. I think the question is, though, how do we bring that up to the current, whether it be through adopting maybe some of the Marion County's language into the ordinance? Or do we strip that out of the ordinance and in the ordinance, make it a, where we're governed, where it's governed by bylaws, and then include a separate set of bylaws? That I'd have to leave up to the legal counsel to see what the best, the best way of addressing that is. So I guess, you know, we definitely, I think, and I, since Commissioner Sterrett isn't here, I don't know what Mary's, she should be here, surely, I don't know what Mary's is, but I think we, we don't have to vote on anything. We give directions to staff, to Ashley and to Ken, and Ken, whoever, to actually work and see, you know, what's the best way to address this, what side, there's been recommendations turned in, what's, which way should we should go with this to bring it up to the modern day. I like your idea, Casey, of including a student in it, because I mean, Lindfield's got a great program, George Fox has got a great program, the high school's got a good program, and how we incorporate in groups such as Zero Waste and everything into it too, because they could be a big partner of ours. And so how do, how do we do all that sort of stuff?
Yeah, and I'm talking to the President of Lindfield in a couple of days about this, so it's like, well, this is a good opportunity to give us something concrete.
So I guess the question is, is, is how the consensus, what consensus do we want to go with, Casey? Consensus that we want staff under Ken and Ashley to work, work with Christian and Ken and decide what's the best way to do it. And then once we decide what the best way of doing it is, then give us.
To bring it back.
To bring it back, bring it back to us to look at.
I'm sorry, I thought you had changes that you were proposing be made.
Well, this would be part, this would be part of, like what I read off, this would be part of, but to look at those changes, look at the, look at the ordinance, you know, look at Marion County's bylaws and see, you know, what is the best way? Are we better for, like Casey said, maintaining the ordinance, maybe changing the language in the ordinance, and changing to be along this, what's the best way of doing that? Because I don't want to say, oh, we're going to take that out of the ordinance and we're going to have separate bylaws.
So do you want to wait in your conversation and meetings first with the College before getting back to us with some thoughts on how you'd like to see it done? And then we can take a look at those other examples and work with Commissioner Kula to sort of then bring something back to the full Board for discussion?
That's what, that's what I like, that's what I like to say.
I was going to say, just, we can just change the ordinance, but I'm good with actually doing some.
I mean, that's, that's the way, that's the way it's, it's been done historically. I, I don't know that there's really a significant difference between amending the ordinance or pulling.
Or creating separate bylaws.
The committee operations out and making bylaws, you know, if it's in the ordinance, I guess the Commission retains a little bit of control.
Yeah, and the ordinance states how, the ordinance states how long the, I haven't looked at the ordinance lately, the ordinance states how long the terms are and when they're, you know, so we're not totally turning over the advisory group in a.
All at once.
All at once, and other than if somebody decides they don't want to do it anymore.
I believe it does have a, well, the, the list of members has when their terms expire, but I don't know if in the, in the ordinance it lists any kind of sequential.
I don't know, it's three years, and I think it's no more than like two at a time or something that get switched out.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was.
And Ken, with all the work that you and Carrie and everybody have been doing on all of the committees, you know, the different ones, we know, I take it, I found one or two committees that were outdated, but we know when everybody's terms expire on what committees they're on and everything, so we can take a look and put together saying, here's this committee and it has these people, and this is when they expire.
We have it available on the website, and sometimes the ones that are out of date is probably the most, are either going to be the least active committees or potentially inactive committees that haven't met in quite some time, they're there if needed. Anytime we get applications forward that are, that the Board takes action on and does appointments, that's usually the time where we go in and we update those rosters and we get that put out to the website. And then we also have a binder at Carrie's desk that has all the committee information. She has a committee's binder there.
Yeah, because I'd rather, I'd rather be more active and know what all, like you said, be more active and know what all those committees are to ensure, two months in advance that we can get out, we can advertise, we can get people in.
A lot of that has to do with the, the role of that committee, and you know, something like SWAC, you know, Ashley and Ken are going to have a pretty good idea that somebody's coming up, you know, the term's about to expire, you know, so it's really triggered by, you know, a lot of times with that department, talking to the liaison, and you know, usually the first offer is, hey, are you interested in re-upping again? Or do we need to find a replacement? And, and then you go from there. And that's, that's been pretty much the process for most of the Boards.
I don't have that much of a problem with process. Part of the, only issue I have is it seems like over the last year and a half, a lot of our applicants have been applicants that came from people on the committee recommending other people, and it didn't go out to the public to let the public know that we had those openings. And that's, that's my big concern.
And it can be a challenge, you know? I know with all the years of working with the Parks Board, you know, there were times, you know, that you didn't have a lot of people clamoring to get appointed to the committee or were not interested. So that's where the, the committee members themselves, a lot of times, would go out to the communities, whether at events or, you know, something like parks, they might be out in the park or talking to somebody on a particular issue, and then they've expressed an interest, and, and that's how they come forward.
Yeah, and I think I'd rather advertise it than do that, instead of do that, then advertise.
Yeah.
But I think.
When I write something on Facebook, it sure gets bad responses, so that's definitely a, a simple way for me to look.
Yeah, I think Ashley and Ken and Christian and you can, do you have kind of an idea of what we, what we want, how we want to approach this?
If I'm hearing you, you'd like to see the committee restructured to have four at-large, one business industry, one waste management, one ecology, one partner organization member, and one commissioner liaison, that would be nine.
Right.
The two industry, are we going to, the two industry representatives would be non-voting, and the liaison commissioner would be non-voting, so that would leave.
Six.
Six. But then Commissioner Kula mentioned trying to find a space for a student to remember.
I would drop one of the four at-large students then, if we still wanted nine, drop one of the four at-large students, if at-large, and replace that with a student position.
So that we still have seven voting. And the President's probably for that, so who knows, I'm going to talk to him about it.
So that would be six voting and three non-voting.
I don't really count Casey because he's the.
Let's just have that clear for the record.
Because, no, because he's the liaison, so if, if, because he, he wasn't, well, the liaisons now.
Yeah.
now I would consider liaison is never a voting.
Right.
So there would be nine, and then you'd have the two non-voting industry and the one non-voting commissioner, that would leave six voting.
That'd be six, and we should have an odd number, we should have an odd number.
You can, you could have any.
I don't think that would come in a lot. That's, that's what I'd, that's what I'd rather see.
Okay. And you'd like to see that the terms are staggered?
Yep.
Okay. Any other ex officio members that you'd like to see considered? There's a list in our existing ordinance that you could pick from, or you could pick from other.
Right now, I'm not too concerned about having other officials, but what's in the ordinance about terminating somebody from the committee? I mean, we've had several people like Joe Cook was a law, one, he was on the committee a long time, and I think he went three or four meetings and never, when you meet every quarter, never showed up.
And I think traditionally, that's what we have in, in bylaws. I know in our planning commission, we have bylaws that state three unexcused absences.
Right.
You know.
But I don't think we have that in the ordinance, and since we don't have bylaws.
We don't have that, I've seen in the ordinance.
Maybe that should be something, that should be included in the ordinance.
And I think actually, that's what Ashley was trying to get, when she showed bylaws, is that she wanted to, you know, find out, well, what's, what's an acceptable attendance for, you know, especially when you're talking about quarterly meetings.
Right.
Well, I think four daily meetings, you miss two, you know, you don't make 50% of the meetings.
In a year.
And when you're in a year, that's, but I'd say, so I guess my, my thing about it is, I really don't care if it's still incorporated in the ordinance, or if it's separate bylaws, it can be kept incorporated in the ordinance as long as we may update the, update the ordinance.
Right, right.
And I think we leave that up to staff and Ashley and Ken and her ring to determine what is the best way to get done, accomplish what we want to do.
And I, Ashley, I think that, I know this might sound crazy, but I think I'm okay with the industry reps voting in the manner that we currently have, because I think that if we have, if we had nine people voting, you get a lot more discussion potential and ability to challenge each other.
Yeah, I, I, no, I could give on that one. I don't know, I guess, you know, no, I guess the other thing is, what isn't, what isn't in the-
But to me, it's interesting.
What isn't in the ordinance, and I don't know how we cover this, is to ensure that the industry representatives, that they send like Ashley in, in far enough in advance their reports, because this saying, well, you want to know the report, go look it up at DDQ, or go look it up at the state.
Or getting it at the meeting.
That's not, that, to me, that's not an answer.
Skipping through it, yeah.
So, I can, I can bend on either, with nine, with nine, I could stay with two voting. I don't have a problem with nine, because that gives us, that would give us, you would be the only one not voting then, so that gives, I don't have a problem with that, so.
And that likely increases the odds of making sure you have a quorum of voting.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
So I can, I can stay with that, so.
But I appreciate that it really does stay, say, they will not vote on things that affect them, or something to that effect.
Yeah, and I think Todd, Todd got the opinion, so I think that's, you're very safe on that.
Yeah, I read the opinion, and I felt comfortable with it.
We may need, we may need some clarification, at least I think I still do, on what you mean by a partner organization.
It could be, like, right now, the only one we have right now is really zero waste. But in the future, I could see more of them coming forward, like, Katsev County has three, I think, different, different ones. It's somebody that really specializes in recycling, doing recycling events, you know, a nonprofit, and I think the only one we have now is zero waste.
That's the only one I could think of.
Me, too. And they're countywide. Well, they'd like to be countywide. They're not countywide right now, but they'd like to be countywide. So, that's kind of what I meant by a partner organization, Christian. Okay. So, Ashley, you have any other good hints for us?
No, I think you pretty much covered it. The whole idea about bylaws came up, because I was trying to figure out how to advertise this, how long to advertise it for, and what all.
Understand, understand, it's tough. But I think we go the route with just updating the, updating the ordinance and getting those changes in the ordinance, and Todd probably take care of everything.
I suspect, too, that by adding members, you will see more engagement when you, from members.
Which is what we want, which we want anyways.
That's what I, I would love to see, an active dialogue between new members, because you have work that you're doing, and it'd be nice to have them reflect that back to you.
Yeah. So, I think, Ken, you got anything else?
Nope.
Thank you very much, Ken. That's good. So, I think we'll get, and then Christian and Ken can give us an idea when they'll have the first.
Are you, are you clear on when you're going to take the next steps to fill the open vacancies, or is that still-
No, as long as they're bringing the five back to us that they have, whenever they bring the five back to us.
And they, they know that, they know to bring them back?
I guess, Ken, that would be-
It sounded like that was what he was going to do as front cap.
Yeah, and they'll bring the five back to us.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Chris, thanks, Christian.
Thank you for the audience.
Okay, that takes, takes us out of our work session. Right now, we have a, I was going to wait till Mary get back, Janet, for you to do, because she's supposed to be here about two. Commissioner, for you to do your presentation. She isn't here yet, but if you could wait, come, we'll just go on with our agenda, and you can wait until Mary gets here. Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll move forward then into our informal session, and this time is reserved, briefings, receipt of reports, consultation among commissioners and staff, reports from commissioners on recent actions in areas of responsibility, and other personal administrative decisions. As up, we have our department updates. So, Gary, come on forward. I know things are busy out at the fairgrounds and event center, so.
This weekend.
Very busy this weekend. So, we'll let you start with this weekend, tell us what's going on and everything on this weekend.
All right. Well, it's happy to see so many people from the city here, to see what's going on out that end of town. Since I was here in October, the fairgrounds has been extremely busy, along with the restructuring of office, staff, that type of thing. The Lashman Arena has had events in it every weekend since December. The Lewis Pavilion has been getting a lot more rentals on the weekends during the week. One of our local companies, our neighbor Megget, is holding their, they've been renting it for the last three months during the week, for three or four days, to hold the training in the pavilion. We also have the, the old heritage building out there that's actually, they've been picking up other groups, smaller groups are using it. So, we've actually picked up rentals on a building that we've never rented out before in the last number of years. One of the big things that just happened, people were interested that we just finished the Oregon High School Equestrian Teams, have been meeting here in McMinnville for the last three months, for two weeks out of the, each month. We've had, averaged between 150 and 160 horses at the facility. One of those weeks was 196. Now, think about this for a minute. Each horse has a rider, and each rider has one or two parents, and they were all at the fairgrounds. So, we had, at any given time, seven to eight hundred to a thousand people at the fairgrounds for four days out there. All of these groups are out-of-county residents. They're all from Washington County and Clackamas County. So, the business community ought to be pretty happy about the money that was brought in to those two events. The big one that's happening right now that I had to leave working today, the Pacific Overland Expo and Auction is going to be this weekend. We, right now, we're busy getting things ready. We have an estate that bought a collection of 18 carriages from Humboldt, California. They're going to be sold here, along with some, there's an estate from Jefferson area that's bringing six or seven rigs. We have collections that are arriving tomorrow, tomorrow and Thursday. We probably will sell, or probably will have 90 to 105, just carriages, horseless to put on, carriages. The majority of these are probably turn of the century. I know there's one museum that's coming to purchase. We've already contacted us. I know two of the motels in town are full, because they've been booked up because of the people that are coming to this event. A lot of out-of-state people are coming. Montana, California, Nevada, British Columbia, Colorado. We've been fielding probably 25 to 30 calls a day about this event for the last month. So, we're pretty, it's been a plus for the county tourism. A lot of these people will not just be there, they'll be hitting the wineries, the restaurants, and one of our sponsors is Golden Valley, said that they're always full when this event happens. So, it's a big event. Another new thing that's happened, most of you don't know about, that our neighbor to the north, Washington County, is building a new facility, a 47,000 square foot building, which has squeezed their equine, 4HO equine program out. So, Yamp Hill County is actually hosting the Washington County 4H Fair, be held here the 1st of July. They're paying to use our facility. Will have probably about 120 to 130 horses for that event, and their families will all be here. So, that's, it's kind of been a big deal for us, and kind of the way things are looking, probably be a long-term event that'll be held at the fairgrounds. So, we're kind of keeping the interim events pretty busy out there. The next thing is, the fair is shaping up. We have all our acts finally booked, and contracts signed, and one of the things that we're going to do different this year is, we're going to have a sneak peek on Tuesday night, and it'll be a free gate from 5:00 to 10:00 in the evening. The food vendors open, and some of the booths will be open, but it's just kind of a free sneak peek of, look what's going to happen at the fair. We're going to have one of the old-time standards coming in that night, the people can come, and I'm sure it'll be busy, be Johnny Limbo and the Lugnuts, everybody comes to that.
You got to tell them what this year's theme is, Gary.
Squealing, whee- good times. I have to get that right now. I didn't pick that. Now, let me, squealing, wheeling, good times.
No, I was on the phone with him last week, and he asked him, and he said squealing, wheeling, good times.
So, the fair is looking to be probably, by all indications, going to be just as big as it was last year. Our one, our main act that's coming in on Friday night is Scotty McCurry, huge act that he's been selling crowds out. So, we're pretty proud of that fact that we were able to book him. For the older, older folks, Black Hawk is on Thursday or Wednesday night, and that's an old country group. I think we're going to, like I said, the fairgrounds can be a pretty busy place. The only other thing, news I got has been the legislature representing the fair, Oregon, and Oregon fairs. Legislature's interested in doing, through the Economic Development Department, is hiring a consultant to do a five- and 10-year master plan for all the fairgrounds in Oregon. And we're pretty happy about that. If it passes, and the legislature decides to do that, it'd be a good thing for us, because we have, I just looked, and our last master plan for the fairgrounds is in 1987. What's kind of funny about looking at that one, they hit it right, you know, we're talking about what our economic impact is now that Oregon State did for us. In 87, they said the same thing, that at that time, they said if the fairgrounds was busy, at the, in 87, when it wasn't very busy, that, you know, it was putting $1 to $2 million back in the economy. So, I'm pretty happy that we're putting 7.5 million dollars back into the economy. So, it's time to do a five, a master plan for the fairgrounds. All our facilities are ancient, getting old out there, and so, we need to have, you know, the fair board needs to have a direction on which way to go in the future.
Yep.
You know, we're putting a lot, a big load on 27 acres out there, so we need to make some plans for the future. You know, the arena's built in 1960, and that's our bread and butter. All our barns are, newest barns are built in the 70s. So, you know, we've got some plans, and so, a lot of work to do out there, but we're keeping the facility busy. And, and look, right now, we're actually even booking into 2020 and 2021 for events. I get, I mean, never in my mind, 23 years ago, when I went on the fair board, did I ever think that we'd be booking three years ahead for events? So, but then I never thought we'd have 44,000 people at a fair.
Yeah.
We were lucky to have 10, over five days. So, anyway, so the fair's doing pretty good, fairgrounds is doing real well, and we're, and we're going to keep working hard to keep it, keep it going.
Thanks, Gary. Do you have any questions for Gary?
Well, the only thing I wrote down is what fair infrastructure needs updating, but it sounds like you, you got the answers.
Pick a building.
You should be asking the question, what doesn't need updating?
Doesn't need it. Well, we did, Alex called about 10 years ago, but, you know, the, you know, I don't want to sound like the buildings are falling down, they're not.
Yeah, I didn't hear that. I hear.
But they are getting to the point where it's time to do some more work on, be more serious about the work we're doing on it. You know, the infrastructure's old, I mean, the plumbing, the sewers, all that's old in there. I don't want to see us get to the point where a lot of fairgrounds went out and built new facilities, brand-new facilities, and priced themselves out of business, because most fairgrounds, just like event centers, when they build these new big buildings, they rent so high that they go broke.
Right. I remember you saying that ours are a little, quite a bit lower.
Ours is quite a bit lower, but it's the age, you know, we're, you know, we're, it's a bar. When you look at the, the Lashman Arena, it was built to be, to put horses in, not to have concerts or anything. Well, we don't do that, but I mean, it, you know, the future, future for us, I believe, is to stick with the equine business, because everybody's building an event center, you know, multimillion-dollar event centers. But, you know, to keep, to keep the fairgrounds viable and active for like, you know, bringing people into the county to do other things besides, I mean, you just, all you have to do is come out there on one of the busy horse show weekends, and those people go somewhere at night. You know, when you have 60 or 70 RVs out there in the back lot, they all go out to dinner throughout the town. So, I think, you know, the town does very well with the events that are being held out there.
Yeah.
And I know all our business partners, our sponsors, I mean, I go back to where we were happy to give $5,000 in sponsorships in those days, and now we've got sponsors calling us, when do you send them the packets out, because we want to, want our name in there, so.
I still think our fairgrounds is actually, during the fair, is one of the best places of anybody's to see concerts. I mean, Little Hill, trees, you know, and you could sit in the golden circle if you want, but other than that, I wouldn't trade that for, it's a great place to have. And when you see how many people come to the concert.
Well, one thing's, is that, last year, we had the president of the International Association of Fairs and Expos came to the fair last year. The first thing she said that she saw, because she sees hundreds of fairgrounds and expo centers throughout the world, and she said, the one thing about when they come to Yamp Hill County, she goes, oh my God, there's trees here. It's not just a flat asphalt parking lot. And she said, she goes, this is what fairgrounds used to be, and you guys have been able to keep it that way. And so, it is, it's a attractive facility, but everything's blown.
Okay, any other questions for Gary?
Any more questions, or?
Should we just hope for 80 degrees for the fair?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Great for Gary.
If that week on the farm was 80 degrees, too, I'd be happy, but I wouldn't come.
80 degrees would be nice. The 103 is not too good.
No, and, you know, you could tell Commissioner Lewis that, now that I bought my buckle and my belt for the ambassadors, and I'm sure Commissioner Kula and Commissioner Sterrett will do the same thing.
Now I have Commissioner Lewis's email address. That's what I wrote back to her. I already got an email from her.
You got, you'll get your belt and buckle.
Yeah, I got my belt and buckle, and I got an email address.
For the ambassadors, you know.
Don't leave that up to her.
That's a smart man. Thank you.
You know, I learned years ago, when she sat in your spot.
Thank you, Gary.
Exactly.
You know, before we continue, I wouldn't, yeah, before we continue, I would be-
I would say, just, I, if we want to go ahead and jump into the presentation-
Okay, I will.
-instead of going further into the agenda.
Okay, but I'd be very remiss if I didn't, for most of you already up here, if I didn't introduce our distinguished guests, I think. And first one is, we have Scott Hill, the Mayor of McMinnville, Kelly Manke, the council president, and Jeff Towery, the city's illustrious city manager. And then over here, we have Sean O'Day, who's executive director of the Council of Governments, you know, he finally gave up the cities and decided the Council of Governments was much more appropriate. So, but anyway, welcome, everybody. So, while I, while you're here, is there anything anybody would like that you- So, while I, while you're here, is there anything anybody would like, you guys like to add anything, or just have anything to say? Because getting all three from the city there, you do, Sean?
You're going to hear a lot from me in a moment. I'm part of Janet's.
Oh, you're part, congratulations, Commissioner. So, okay, well, then that, that, if, yeah, you get the best, Janet, you get the best. That's all I could, that's all I can say. So since the other three don't have, seem to have anything to say, they're just intently listening.
You're just supportive, I heard.
I'm sure, Casey, it'll be much better when we start meeting in the civic hall, you know, it'll be a much better...
You know, I know how busy this meeting is, so I haven't pushed on that one.
Yeah, I know, we haven't pushed on that one. So why don't you come on forward, Commissioner and Sean, and introduce, introduce your guests, and we'll, hopefully Mary will get, Mary will get here, so you can all come forward and pull up some more chairs and, and welcome, everybody.
First, I'd like to apologize that we're having technical issues with our projector. IT's currently working on it. And then for those of you that are in the audience, because you can't see the slideshow, we do have staff that are making copies of the presentation that should be on their way over here, so hopefully we can hand those out.
Okay. So Commissioner Carlson, you going to pass this? I should, I guess, once a, once a, oh, once a commissioner, always a commissioner, you know how that goes. So, okay, Mr. O'Day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm Sean O'Day. I'm the Executive Director of the Midland Lamont Valley Council of Governments. I'm going to begin the presentation today. We're going to be talking to you about a federal entity known as a continuum of care. Janet's going to be doing, carrying the laboring oar on this. I just have the distinguished honor of just introducing the topic to you and explaining why it is, as the Executive Director of the Cog, I'm here before you on this matter. So this, this effort really began in twenty sixteen, when four elected officials from a part of our region came together and said it would be important, as units of local government, to come together to study the causes and drivers of homelessness and housing insecurity within the region, and to develop concrete strategies to be able to address this problem. Specifically, the mayors of Salem, Kaiser, then Commissioner Carlson, and Commissioner Wheeler from Polk County, all came together and formed a public-private task force made up of government officials as well as private nonprofit officials to take a look at this issue. And over the course of several months, they studied the issue, broke into small task, task forces, and ultimately, the, the effort culminated in the development of a strategic plan that did just as their initial intent was, which was to come up with clear strategies to address this issue, and not just another study and strategy that gets put in a notebook and put on the shelf, but rather ones that had clear strategies with lead agencies for each of them, for the, where the lead agency was going to be responsible. Within that plan, however, there were several strategies that were identified that served primarily local governments, and for which there was no lead agency. It was at that time, when the proponents of this effort came to the council of government and said, if we were willing to fund a position, would you be willing to house it there within the council of government, to take a look at and to take the lead on these key strategies? The council of government's board agreed to that, and thus became the Cog's entry into this issue for the first time. About a year ago, we hired a homeless coordinator, a program coordinator, who began to undertake those strategies that were assigned to us within that plan, and specifically, out of them, I'm going to call out three today. One was to take a look at where local governments were spending their money in this area, a thing that we call the money map, to identify where funding is coming from and where funding is going towards homelessness. The idea being to identify gaps and overlaps, to help inform local government decision-makers to make better use of those public resources. Another product that this position created and produced, that was a strategy spelled out in the plan, was to do an asset inventory of where are all the service providers in our region? What types of services are they providing? What is their target population? Again, to be able to identify from a, through a service lens, where the gaps and overlaps are. The third one, and it's what bring us here today, was to conduct a study of this federal entity known as a continuum of care. Once upon a time, as you'll hear in Janet's presentation, within our region, we used to have a two-county continuum of care, which is a federal entity that makes us eligible for certain federal dollars to put towards homelessness. And that two-county continuum dissolved and joined, what you'll learn here in a few moments, became the balance of state. The task that we were given was to study the history of that, and to come back and make recommendations to local governments on whether it behoove us as a region to reconstitute that continuum of care. To do that work, we contracted with Janet Carlson, who did the analysis, and I think you have a copy of that report in front of you, and what follows here is really Janet's presentation to give you that analysis, explain a little bit more about what a continuum of care is, what the region's history is with respect to that, and what our recommendation, what at least the staff recommendation is to the local governments within our region going forward. I should also note, with us today is Jimmy Jones from Community Action Agency. Jimmy was a, a technical expert as we put together this report, and will be here to help answer any technical questions that you have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Janet.
Thanks. Thank you. Well, I taught junior high in the nineteen eighties, long before, we used mimeographs when I started. So we're going back to the pre-technology days with paper. I want to thank Ken for sacrificing his paper copy so I can actually see, because I have a flash drive in my pocket, but I don't think that's going to do me any good if we can't get the PowerPoint going. So hopefully you have this in front of you, the slides, and can follow along, and we're going to, Sean has introduced slide two, which is the overview of what we're going to talk about, so we'll actually start on slide three, about what is a continuum of care. I want to thank you, while you're getting that in front of you, for inviting us to come before you today. And I think the other piece is that, and this will come up in the slideshow, is that we're really making some decisions about whether or not to reconstitute this continuum of care, and if we do, whether it would be a Marion Polk, or whether it would be a Marion Polk and Yamhill Continuum of Care. And so really, a lot of that depends on your perspective and interest, and, and so we are appreciative that we have the opportunity to talk to you about this today. So continuum of care has been required by HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government, since nineteen ninety-four, and it was actually triggered by the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, and the idea that HUD wanted communities to create applications and do planning as communities to submit this application, prioritize programs, and so forth. However, even the, and I do want to mention, the dollars for the continuum of care, and I'm familiar with Marion Polk, so, and Jimmy has some information about Yamhill, so he can do the color commentary when we get to some good spots. But for Marion and Polk, when we did the money map that Sean talked about, we actually identified a hundred and seven million dollars in the snapshot year that we looked at, I think it was sixteen, seventeen, maybe was the last year that we looked at, that was going into homelessness. Now, this does not, there's some assumptions that go into, obviously, snapshots, but dollars were prorated, so we're looking at mental health dollars, alcohol and drug dollars, community corrections, prisoner reentry dollars, dollars that you, as a county, spend also on the population. And for, in some instances, folks are not homeless, but, but for these dollars, they would be homeless, and so we wanted to make sure we had the broadest snapshot possible, yet using a more conservative approach. The continuum of care dollars in our good year, that we had the best year, was right around a million dollars for Marion and Polk. So a million dollars in continuum of care dollars, a hundred and seven million dollars in dollars going towards homelessness. So you can see, it's not necessarily the largest pot of money that, that addresses this issue. But I think what HUD was looking at was the idea that by taking that million dollars and leveraging it and connecting it with all of these other dollars, we would start better coordinating services and having more effective services, and looking at data to drive those priorities, as opposed to tradition, or, you know, what is, what we've always done in the past. So the two main purposes of a continuum of care, and this is according to HUD, and I'm drawing from a document, and you'll see it listed on the PowerPoint slideshow, and hopefully you got this long paper that we sent as well, but this is called Continuum of Care 101. It's that thick, all right? And it's put out by HUD, and so this is really their view of how continuums of care should be set up. So they list the two main purposes as, one, developing a long-term strategic plan and a year-round planning effort to address homelessness, and then, two, to prepare that application for funds under the McKinney-Vento Act. Then they list the programs that are included under continuum of care, supportive housing, shelter plus care, and Section Eight, single-room occupancy program, but then talk about numerous other targeted programs that they would like these dollars to be connected to. Runaway and homeless youth programs, family programs, veterans programs, healthcare programs, even what they call the mainstream programs, which is public housing and the Section Eight Housing Choice vouchers, workforce, alcohol and drugs, or substance abuse, mental health, and so forth. So again, the idea is that there is a broad, inclusive planning process, and more coordinated services across multiple dollars, not just federal, and not just that continuum of care program. There are a number of structures that HUD recommends for continuum of care organizations. Across the nation, about nine percent are cities, so it's within an urban boundary. A little over half are single counties. About a third are regions, which would be at least two counties, and then seven percent are what they call balance of state, and Sean mentioned that term. So these are areas that are not covered by a city, a county, or a region, and most often they're large rural areas. So when you think of Oregon, and you think of all of the small counties that we have east of the mountains, on the coast, and southern Oregon, and so on, that would be those that probably wouldn't have the resources to create their own city-based or county-based continuum of care. And then in six states, actually, the entire state is a continuum of care, because their populations are so small. So that plays out in Oregon, where we have single-county continuums of care in Multnomah, Washington, Clackamas, Lane, and Jackson. So each of those have their own continuum of care. Then today, we only have one regional continuum of care in Oregon, and that's central Oregon, Deschutes, Jefferson, and Crook. And then all the remaining twenty-eight counties are in the balance of state, which is called the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. Now Marion and Polk joined this in two thousand and eleven, and Yamhill, I believe, has been in that balance of state for the duration of the balance of state. So you've been in that larger continuum of care for many years. There are advantages and disadvantages for having large regions for a continuum of care. Some of the advantages, and they're listed on slide number nine, is where I'm at right now, is that when you merge together in your small counties, you get bigger numbers, right? So you can show greater need and perhaps do more things by pooling the dollars. You can also have jurisdictions or counties that have effective programs share their expertise with counties that have less effective programs, and so you, everybody wins if that happens. The disadvantages, and this, I think, is what Marion and Polk has experienced in participating in the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. One is that if you have twenty-eight counties, and Jimmy, do you want to talk about the size of Rural Oregon Continuum of Care?
So the balance of state system was really developed for the eastern United States, where states are much, much smaller than they are out here. And so if you look at the struggling continuums across the country that are balance of states, they are predominantly concentrated in the western half of the United States. So if you take these twenty-eight counties and add up all the square miles on them, you're looking at an area that in total would be the sixteenth-largest state in the United States. And there are times we struggle to talk across counties and talk across towns, but imagine trying to coordinate services in such a continuum that was so large, that it stretches from Ontario in the east to the, to the Pacific Ocean, from, from essentially Washington State down to California and places. It's an enormous continuum.
So in order to actually do the inclusive planning, that would be something that would benefit our region, you would want to have all of the partners that are involved, just like you were talking about solid waste when we were waiting to be here, you want all of those partners involved in doing the planning. And so that means you want folks that represent veterans, you want folks that represent domestic violence, you want folks that represent family services, you want mental health services, all these different services at the table to determine what's the best course of action for the, the continuum of care priorities. When you have twenty-eight counties, it's at such a twenty thousand, thirty thousand, fifty thousand foot level, that what the individual needs of those communities are can get lost. So one solution to that would be to do a sub-regional group, and that would mean Marion Polk or Marion Polk and Yamhill could gather together and try to work within the context of those twenty-eight counties and do their own planning. So Jimmy actually pulled together a group, a community group, to try to do that. And unfortunately, it didn't work with the community group very well, because no one saw Jimmy, I think, as being like the, the gatekeeper, I guess, for, for the resources. So it was on a voluntary basis, and folks didn't really want to give up their turf and, and coordinate. And also, I think, within the continuum of care, the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, they were not interested in saying, well, if you do your own planning, we'll carve out a particular portion of the dollars that, you know, that would, would go to this planning. So as I show you the dollars, it will become more obvious to you what has happened then over time. The second is the data collection, which is a problem when you, we collect data locally, but you send it into twenty-eight counties, and then what pops up on the federal screen is twenty-eight counties' worth of data aggregated, and you, it's not meaningful to communities to look at data from across Oregon. You actually want to see what's going on in your own community. So that's been a concern as well. The history of the continuum of care in our region, and Sean reviewed this briefly, until two thousand and eleven, the Community Action Agency for Marion and Polk Counties staffed a continuum of care for Marion and Polk Counties. And it was a consortium approach, there were a number of nonprofits, the governments really weren't involved in it in any probably meaningful way. The Community Action Agency did not draw down federal dollars for the staffing, so they were voluntarily contributing the staffing. And in two thousand and eleven, really what changed was that there were new regulations coming down from the federal government that said, thou shalt use a homeless management information system and start collecting data, and we're going to base your dollars on performance rather than on need, for the most part. And I think the staff felt like that was not something in their day job that they could add, that it was, it was an onerous, more onerous expectation. Rural Oregon Continuum of Care made an offer to Marion and Polk and said, come join us, we'll do the staff work for you, and we will hold your programs harmless, at least initially, and we will help you grow your programs, because we're about success, and you're about success, and this will all be great. I gleaned this out of the minutes, we actually found the minutes from July two thousand and eleven. So there was a unanimous vote of the participants that were at that meeting to join the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. I was, began as a county commissioner in two thousand and three, and as Sean said, I was involved in this Midland Lamont Homeless Initiative Task Force in two thousand and sixteen. I was not aware that this had happened in my own community between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and sixteen. So for five years, this was operating, and it was so under the radar that I had no idea. And I was very interested in homelessness. So it was not something where the jurisdictions were made aware of it, asked whether we were in favor of it, it just happened with the consortium of nonprofits, and the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care began operating on our behalf.
And speaking just for myself, not for the city of Salem, at the same time, I was the deputy city manager for Salem, and I did not know that that vote had taken place on. And it was one of our employees that was on that committee, one of the city of Salem employees that made that note.
But it was on a program level, as opposed to a leadership level, so it just...
It tells you just how much under the radar that was.
So the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, as you know, because that's the one that you're in, is operated by Community Action Partnership of Oregon, so those are all the community action directors and association of them. They have an executive director for their association, and they hire two staff people to manage those twenty-eight counties under the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. So we're now on slide eleven. So why is the impetus to consider change today? Well, first of all, I think that homelessness is certainly a prominent issue, not just in this region, but in the state and across the nation. I think there's a growing public awareness, more media stories about homelessness, more concern, people wanting to know what to do, and also a growing expectation that government needs to take action of some sort. How are we going to respond to homelessness? Also, there is no designated entity doing coordinated planning, at least in the Marion and Polk area. And so in a vacuum, we have dozens of task forces and groups that are trying to, to review different aspects of homelessness. None of them, oh, we are, look at that, we're on slide, what does that say? I don't have my reading glasses on. Is that eleven? Okay. One more. There we go. Thank you. Woo-hoo. All right, do you want your paper back?
Sure.
All right.
You can take my last one.
Okay, all right. Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, so anyway, and no, and no entity also that's perceived as like the legitimate, this is the one that's on first, on homelessness in our community. There's lots and lots of different programs providing services. When Ally Trishel, who worked for Cog as that homeless program coordinator, did her gaps analysis and resource mapping, she found five hundred and fifty programs providing homeless services just in Marion and Polk counties. I mean, that's a lot of services, a lot of collaborations that touch on homelessness that may not be primarily focused on homelessness, but when you look at mental health, substance abuse, domestic violence, all of those bring the aspect of homelessness to them. abuse, domestic violence, all of those bring the aspect of homelessness to them. And then, there have been some capacity and performance issues with the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, and I think I'll let Jimmy speak to that as well.
So, every continuum in the United States is in competition with one another. The Rock, the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, is in competition with Lane County, which is its own COC to the south, and Clackamas County to the north, but it's also in competition with continuums in Kansas, and Nebraska, and Alabama, and Pennsylvania, all across the country. So, historically, how HUD decided who got what in terms of resources was that they would evaluate local need based on the total population and information from the point-in-time count that they have every year. In 2012, that really began to change dramatically, and instead, the entire awards were based on performance. So, each one of these continuums across the country are in competition with one another for resources. So, it is incumbent upon every continuum to do absolutely everything that you can to make sure that you are meeting the benchmarks on these metrics so that you can attract resources into your communities. The game has always really been stacked against rural America in this competition. HUD, for the most part, has sort of dedicated, seemingly, in terms of its formulas, most of its resources toward urban environments, but it is possible for smaller regional COCs or even county COCs to do very, very well if they have government involvement and if they are collaborating between government and social service providers and other entities, especially the healthcare system, to reduce the number of homeless individuals in a footprint. So, nationwide competition. The scores every year in this collaborative application that is submitted to HUD range from zero at the very bottom to 200 at the very top. The highest-scoring COC in the United States is actually Clackamas, just to the north. They scored 190 out of 200 points on this application, and essentially, the federal government is throwing so much money at them that they are able to meet most of their needs in that community and begin to draw down their homeless population. The Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, in this most recent competition, scored 138.75. So, that doesn't mean a whole lot unless you know what the mean is, right? Well, the mean was 160, and in HUD formulas, the really significant number is 166 because they considered that the weighted mean. If you score 166 or above, HUD is basically going to give you nearly everything that you ask for. They're going to find not only your tier-one priorities, but your tier-two priorities, and in certain cases, they'll even come back and give you money you didn't ask for to help address this problem. So, 166 is really sort of the benchmark that every continuum ought to be shooting for, and we're nearly 30 points below that, and we have consistently scored in that range below it for several years. Well, that is a serious problem, obviously, but it's one that's going to get much worse in the future because increasingly, since 2012, HUD has gotten to a position where a larger and larger and larger percentage of that total score comes from performance. So, The Rock, in particular, scored very poorly in terms of its data collection, in terms of its data quality, scored very poorly in terms of its collaboration, and there's not a whole lot of evidence that this 28-county continuum, increasingly under pressure to enhance its performance, is going to be able to kind of keep up with the game, so to speak. It's sort of that Red Queen problem from Alice in Wonderland. You're racing as fast and as fast as you can to stay in the place that you are. But without some serious changes, we're going to find ourselves in a position where the funding is actually going to get worse.
So, some data. First of all, the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, when you look at the numbers of homeless people, and this is from the 2018 figures, is ninth in the nation. So, very high numbers of homeless people. Chronically homeless, which is defined as being homeless for a year or more, or being homeless three times in the last 36 months for at least 12 months, and must have a disabling condition, we're 10th in the nation. And when you look at the Marion Polk Continuum of Care funding, the left column is where we were at before moving into the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. So, you can see in 2005, roughly $727,000. By 2010, the amount had moved up, and this was based on need again, to $954,000. Then, in 2011, July was the vote, and the promise to hold homeless. You look at 2012, actually, there was a bump up. 2013, back almost exactly where we were in 2010. And then, from 2014 through 2018, you can see how the dollars have been declining for the Marion and Polk programs. And yet, when you look at the far-right column, you can see that the dollars actually haven't been declining for the full 28-county Rural Oregon Continuum of Care. Even though their performance hasn't been that great, they've still been getting incremental increases. But Marion County and Polk County's proportion of those increases has gone down and down and down. The other -- and I'm going to let Jimmy also describe this because this is his calculation here.
So, when I first -- I was primarily working in the Vancouver area, Clark County, Washington continuum, before I took a job working in Marion County for the Community Action Agency there in 2016. And so, when I moved into that system, I took a long, hard look at what the resources were coming into the situation, not only in terms of local commitment, but state commitment, and especially federal commitment. And one of the things I noticed almost immediately was that The Rock seemed to be getting a very large amount of money, about $3.2 million. But then, when you sit back and sort of asking yourself questions, it also had to sort of divide that money up among the total homeless population that was in its footprint. So, when you consider just how many homeless individuals there are in these 28 counties, you know, you're looking at the ninth-largest homeless population in the United States, the 10th-largest chronic homeless population in the United States, an unsheltered rate of about 61% across the state. When you look at that, that $3.2 million doesn't go very far at all. So, I started a simple question by going a little bit further and saying, "What does this look like compared to other counties, other COCs in this area?" So, the information you see there on the left are essentially urban environments, and I've already told you that HUD, for the most part, has discriminated against rural homelessness from the very beginning and sort of favored these urban situations very heavily. So, you can sort of, you know, kind of get the idea that maybe we shouldn't be comparing ourselves to Portland or to Clackamas or Washington County, or even Clark County, just north of Portland, across the river. But when we compare ourselves to a lot of very well-organized, very well-functioning, smaller rural continuums of care, like the one in Eugene, the Lane County COC, you can begin to see just how dramatically underfunded on the federal level these projects are. So, what I did was I took the total funding for a continuum and divided it by the number of homeless individuals that are showing up in the point-in-time count that takes place every year. So, in Clark County, just to the north, the end product of that equation was that Clark County, Washington, is getting $2,500 every year per homeless person in that continuum, per homeless individual every year in their COC. Lane County, just to the south, is getting $2,400 essentially every year for every homeless person in their continuum, every single year. But then, when you apply the same logic to the balance-of-state continuum, the same logic to the continuum that we are in here in Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill Counties, that figure drops to $550 per person per year, essentially a five-to-one disparity between what's happening in Lane County and what's happening in Clark County to the north. And then, when you compare it to what's happening in Clackamas County, the single-highest-performing county in the United States, where they're getting nearly $5,000 per homeless person per year, it's almost a civil rights issue in a way. If you become homeless in Salem, you have far, far fewer resources than if you were homeless in Eugene, or if you weren't homeless in Wilsonville, just to the north.
Can I interrupt real quick? How do the numbers compare to Marion and Polk? Because you've used those numbers before. Just curious if you have that.
The Marion Polk number is almost identical to that.
Oh, wait, to the 548?
Almost identical to that. It's actually a little bit lower than that. It's around 530, if I remember correctly. But it is within range, and Yam Hill is just a little bit better than that, but not statistically significant.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the first policy question that we looked at was, should the region establish its own continuum of care? And I think our answer has been yes. We think, given what we've just seen, that we should. We looked not only at the money, but the opportunity for coordination, for better planning, more strategic planning, the local control issue, being able to be over our own destiny, I guess, if you want to say that. We also noticed that the balance of state, because of this drop year after year, is distributing dollars that are, we would say, represent our need in Marion County across that 28-county region. And then, again, we've had attempts to try to coordinate within that context of balance of state, which have not been successful. I want to be really careful to say that we're not saying that we're doing this solely because of money. I mean, I always say, "It's not about the money," and yet, it's always about the money. So, when you look at how we're doing financially, you just saw that chart that showed we're not doing that well. At the same time, if we were to change tomorrow, it would probably take us a number of years to build up to where Lane County is. That didn't happen overnight. And so, there would be other reasons that we would need to do it, and not just simply for the dollars. But those other reasons are easily as compelling as the opportunity to provide more resources in our community.
Just as a, for instance, in my introductory comments, I mentioned the money map and the resource map. Although we provided that information to local governments, there's really no effective regional vehicle to bring those units of government together to look at that information and begin coordinating decisions.
It's simply a map.
Right. It's simply a map.
An interesting piece of information.
It's an interesting piece of information that, absent coordination, it's going to be really hard to put it to use.
I like to compare this to a generational decision, really. It might take five, 10, 15 years for us to catch up to a position where Eugene already is, because they've been working on it for 20 years. They sort of had their act together in 1995 when this continuum system was established, and so, they are way ahead of the game. But in five to 10 years, I think we can even make a substantial difference to get it, you know, that $550 could look more like $1,000, it could look $1,200, $1,300, something in that particular range. The other big part of this, to me, is that, you know, if you look at the historic data going back in time, it sort of implies that, you know, Marion and Polk Counties are getting less, they're getting, they are absolutely getting less. They were getting around 32% when that chart started, they were getting about 21% today. But that really isn't the question. The question is whether the COC as a whole is going to be capable of achieving something close to that weighted mean. And if it's not, the entire 28 counties are never going to crawl out of that particular situation. And the other element of that is you sort of have to look around and ask yourself, "Is everything being done that can be done to address this problem?" There are local resources, there are state resources that all of us in the network are fighting for at the legislature, but then, there are federal resources. And if, you know, you know, when I am working in Marion and Polk Counties, I go over to Wallace Marine Park, and I ask myself, "Are we doing everything that we possibly can to figure out this solution?" If I were here in Yam Hill County, I would go over to YCAP, and I would look at the people camping in that particular location, and there are RVs that are parked there, and I would ask myself, "Are we doing everything that we possibly can to get enough resources into this situation to solve the problem?" So, it's not so much of kind of analyzing the historical issues at play that resulted in us getting in the position we are. We also got to take a look at the next five to 10, 20 years to see if we can do better.
So, really, today, we're just here to answer the first policy question, but then, other policy questions follow that will need to be answered over the course of the next number of months. And policy question number two, once we decide that, yes, we do want to reconstitute a continuum of care, the very next question is, so who's going to be part of that? Is it just going to be Marion Polk again? Is it going to be Marion Polk, Yam Hill? We've actually, Jimmy's had some conversation with Lynn Benton Lincoln, and they're a little bit frustrated with the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care and thought it was a great idea. We'll be having that discussion with our steering committee on Thursday. I will just say, and I'm not second-guessing what the group will say, but a lot of the reasons that we were doing this would go away in a region that's too large. And having a six-county region, I'm not sure, would get the same benefits as having a two or a three-county region, but the steering committee will make that recommendation. I've listed here on this slide all of the entities that HUD would like to participate in the prioritization and planning process for a continuum of care. So, it ranges all the way from the nonprofits and faith-based organizations, businesses, governments, and you can read the list. So, lots of opportunity for folks to be involved, and as we develop that governance structure, we'd be looking at creating a board, creating a steering committee, possibly creating committees, creating networking groups. And so, if Yam Hill County were to be interested in joining with us, we would want to make sure that we all agreed, and we've done this together before, in the Workforce Jobs Council and senior services and other areas that we've worked on together. So, I think that it is definitely doable, but just want to make sure, as we move into this, that we can find out sooner rather than later what your preference is. There are a number of board requirements that HUD put forward in this Continuum of Care 101 and in their administrative rules. We need a written process, we're going to have to adopt a charter, we'll need to have a conflict of interest policy, we need to appoint board members that represent all of those groups, we'll need to start holding meetings. There are planning requirements that go along with having this board, the point-in-time count, our Community Action does that for Marion and Polk Counties. I'm assuming that your Community Action does that in your community as well. And so, that's really important data that will need to go into the planning, GAPS analyses, consolidated planning. Coordinated entry is a process that's really a fundamental requirement from HUD. In fact, we had a conference call, Marion County's lobbying firm facilitated that, and we've talked to the officials in Washington DC about this already, and they have two questions for us, and they've given us technical assistance. We had that call yesterday morning. Where are you with coordinated entry, and where are you with the homeless management information system? So, I think I'm going to have Jimmy talk about what we're doing in Marion and Polk with coordinated entry.
So, I'll keep this brief, but coordinated entry is essentially a set of best practices and philosophies designed to make sure that whatever resources you do have in a community are going to the individuals who need them the most and in an appropriate way. One of the problems that we have in homeless services over the last 30 years nationwide is we have wasted literally hundreds of millions of dollars of spending on people who didn't need assistance. And the reason for that is we have lined up very low-needs people who have been homeless for a week, or two, or three weeks, and things like that, and we have spent resources on those individuals, even though statistically, they are going to rehouse 95% of the time on their own. The philosophy behind coordinated entry is spending your dollars on the 10% of the population especially, who will never, ever rehouse on their own, and making sure that their impact on a community is therefore reduced. One of the things that we do alongside that coordinated entry process is we develop something called a FUSE statistic. So, that's frequent users of service engagement. They use it in Eugene as well. And what it was really designed to do was measure the impact of an individual homeless client financially on the community as a whole. So, our FUSE statistic is pretty simple. It's just, how many times have you been to the emergency room? How many hospital days have you had? And how many times have you engaged with EMTs? You could add in other things that are also community cost for the homeless population as well, including jail bed nights and, you know, court dockets, all that sort of thing. We keep ours generally related to medical issues. And what we found is that the very highest scores in that metric, maybe only 1% of the entire homeless population, are costing the community an enormous amount of resources. They might be going to the emergency room 25 to 30 times a year. So, we assigned a cost to that of about $2,000 per instance. That's pretty conservative as a whole. So, you know, that very small handful of individuals might be costing the community $100,000 a year, when you can turn around for $17,800 a year and house those individuals and save $80,000. So, coordinated entry is sort of designed to use data in that way. And the way that we determine need in our community is that we, every single individual in Marion and Polk that is either housing or home, excuse me, housing unstable or homeless, when they are assessed by my agency, they're given two instruments essentially. The first is a demographic piece of information. YCAP uses the same thing here, the system that was developed in Marion Counties and one used in 28 counties in the state. It looks at that demographic information, so that includes things like income-related information, it includes barrier-related information, considers evictions, all of those things to get a very accurate demographic portrait of the individuals that you're trying to provide assistance to. The other half of that assessment is a vulnerability-indexed instrument called the VI-SPADAT. It's a terrible acronym for Vulnerability Index Service Prioritization Decision Assistance Tool. What it is very good at is figuring out who is high-needs, who is middle-needs, and who is very low-needs. The range on this thing is zero to 20, and at the highest ends, people who are scoring 12 and above, those are people who need longer-term assistance. Those are the folks you really ought to be spending most of your money on. So, the system is designed, then, to have resources for the high, resources for those in the middle, and then, for the people who recently became homeless at the bottom, to provide short, one-time, quick assistance, a deposit, first-month rent, get them immediately back into housing before all these other things begin to accumulate. And because we haven't had coordinated entry in most of Oregon for the last 20 years, we've spent a lot of our money in places it shouldn't have been spent in. We've housed a lot of people for long terms that could have successfully rehoused in shorter terms, and then, we have ignored this high-needs homeless population that you see, especially here in southern Yam Hill County, in the city of McMinnville, who, for the most part, have not had housing placements and had the opportunity to rehouse. So, as a result of that, in Marion and Polk County, we have, among the homeless population, a 38% felony rate in the last five years. We have a 33% parole and probation rate, or currently. We have an eviction rate of 25%. The median income for the entire population is zero, but if you throw out the half of the people who don't have any income at all, the median income for the half that do is $8,800 a year, which is essentially social security disability. Add all that up together and present it to a landlord and say, "Will you please help me house this person?" And most of the time, you know, we struggle to get an outcome for that. So, coordinated entry is designed to use data in smart ways to make sure that resources are being spent as wisely as possible.
So, here are some of the coordinated entry findings that Community Action has had between 2016 and January of this year. They've assessed, now, they've assessed actually over 6,000 individuals, but at the time, it was roughly 5,900. 26, 28 of those were deemed to be homeless, and you can see the population is primarily[1770.11] And you can see the population is primarily children, families, a large chronically homeless population, significant veterans population, and then elderly is the next in line. Also, you'll note the median age is 45 and almost identical proportions of men and women, and primarily Caucasian. The last area, when you're looking at a governance structure, is what I call accountability requirements. And so that's contracting with providers, monitoring performance, taking action against poor performers, doing this coordinated assessment system, entering data in the homeless management information system. One of the things that I learned recently, and I really wasn't aware of that, is that the rural Oregon continuum of care does not contract with the programs. HUD contracts directly with the programs and the dollars flow that way. They are the collaborative applicant, so they do the collaborative work to prioritize and put in the application. So I think that structure, what we're looking at to do in our governance structure is to have a unified funding agency, which would mean the dollars from HUD would come to our agency, and then we would create sub recipients of each of the providers, which means then we would be holding those providers accountable through the local agency as opposed to the US government trying to hold a local provider accountable. We think that that's going to be a better process. So selecting the lead organization, and I know, Sean, do you want to talk at all about COG at this point, or?
Sure. Do so real quickly.
So one of the questions that regularly comes up during our presentation, and as I said at the beginning, why the COG? Why are we part of this? We're really here because we were asked to be tasked to host and facilitate this conversation for the region by four local governments that came together and said, we're going to pull our resources for this study. Going forward, the COG has also been identified as a potential place to house this, although I'll be the first to tell you, we're not the only option. County government could take the lead on this, particularly if it's a single county continuum of care, you often see that. There could be a coalition of homeless, as you can see here on the slide, of homeless coalition leadership. You could also use a nonprofit model where a nonprofit is taking the lead. However, it is, the COG is eligible to be able to host this activity and play this role. My board hasn't signed off on this just yet. Instead, we're waiting to see what the will and the desire of our member governments are first. However, one of the things that we do well as a council of governments is receive and allocate federal resources. We do so within the region already with respect to business lending, we do so with respect to transportation planning and economic development. We have different policy committees made up of key leaders from the region in each of those areas that get together, identify our region's needs in those areas, we receive those federal resources, and then we allocate those to where those needs are as identified by our membership, and then hold those individuals that are receiving those dollars accountable to deliver the results that we're looking for. And when you look at a continuum of care, it's pretty much what you've been hearing for the last 20 minutes, that's what is intended, is to set up a structure where you will be able to identify where your needs are, receive those resources, deliver them, and then hold those individuals accountable for the results that you're trying to achieve. And so as a result, the COG has been one of the entities that's been identified, but again, I'll be the first to tell you, we're not the only one, and it has yet to be seen whether we would house it. But right now, you know, at least on a staff level, we're taking a good look at this, and we'll be taking it back to the COG board in June with, once we have a good sense of where the region is, whether the region wants to move forward in creating its own continuum of care, and if so, where folks are leaning as far as where it should be housed.
The other thing in addition to a lead agency that we will need is staff. The rural Oregon continuum of care actually has number two, technical staff, and number three, homeless management information, like data entry staff. We believe that we would need three positions with the newer continuum of care. The position number three, the HMI staff locally, is actually being delivered through Community Action, and Jimmy has graciously said that they would continue doing that, at least for the, in the transition and as we get going, which means that the COG would need to hire, if the COG were the unified agency, number one and number two. My belief in doing the analysis is that if you are really wanting to get nonprofits all on the same page, rowing in the same direction, you need someone who can navigate those discussions, that has excellent communication skills, that understands the politics of all of this, that understands the system and the service needs, understands what it takes to deliver effective services on homelessness, that generally is not the same person that's your grant writer, or that is evaluating programs or looking at data. And so to have a technical staff position, because those functions are required whenever you do a federal program, but also have a staff leader position, we think would be a good mix of staff to be able to make it more successful. There are lots of collaborative groups that meet in our communities, and I know as counties you have public safety coordinating councils, and local alcohol and drug planning committees, and housing authorities, and early learning hubs, and coordinated care organizations. And Jan Calvin, who is sitting back here, she just started April the 1st, because as you know, I have shifted my residence from Oregon to Idaho, and so I'm going to be phasing out and doing more of the written work remotely to help still kind of be behind the scenes and help shepherd this, but Jan is going to be the person on the ground that's actually going to be doing these presentations in the future and working with these organizations. So she's setting up appointments right now with the various collaborative partnerships so we can get letters of support from them. I think it will show, because there's so many different roles of people that sit on these different groups, it will show a nice broad base of support if we can inform those groups about what we're doing and to enlist their support as well. So policy question number three, and I think really we've talked about this quite a bit, so I won't belabor it, but this planning needs to be more strategic, we need to be looking at leverage and creating this go-to organization that everybody agrees is the legitimate hub for homelessness discussions, and really looking too at not just having that 20,000-foot discussion, even in a smaller region, but what are the individual needs of Marion County, of Salem, if Yamhill County were involved, of Yamhill County, and your cities, McMinnville, Newburgh, and other cities there. So, and we just met with the Confederated Tribes this morning, what are their particular needs and how does this work for them? Because as you know, every community is unique, and every community has its own resources and needs. We talked about our neighbors to the south and to the north. Lane Continuum of Care has done an excellent job, as we saw earlier. They have a poverty and homelessness board and a steering committee, they have action-oriented people actually written into their bylaws and charter. We want action-oriented people too, that will be involved in this continuum of care, to make it really energize and be the thing that it could be. They're also very cognizant of the conflict of interest, which it's interesting right now because the folks that serve on the committees and board that represent Marion and Polk County are primarily folks who also get the money from the continuum of care. In Lane County, if you serve on the board, you cannot receive money from the continuum of care. They have several non-voting positions, their coordinated care organization, their workforce folks, their public housing folks, for their expertise, but they, if you're voting, you don't have a conflict. So that is something that we're really looking carefully at. Their living document that they call their strategic plan is very detailed, it takes all of the monies that are going into this, and they actually designate dollars for Lane County Springfield and Eugene. They talk about specific numbers of units that they're going to create of different types of housing. Clackamas County similarly, and you heard that they're the greatest, the best score in the nation, which is pretty impressive. They have a steering committee, a homeless council, and a policy committee, then each feeds into the other and has its own roles and functions. And then they have an annual goals and objectives strategic plan, looks a lot like Lane County's plan, again, very detailed, doesn't just focus on the small amount of money that's continuum of care, but focuses on all of the monies and how they work together on specific objectives. So the change process, we, in talking to the HUD officials, need to provide five pieces of evidence by the end of the year, and given the holidays and how I know things work in November and December, my goal is to have those to Washington DC by October 31st. And so there are things like formally notifying the Rock that we're not going to be part of them anymore, telling them which jurisdictions are going to be a part of the new continuum of care, talking about our homeless management information system capacity, talking about our coordinated entry capacity, those types of things. Once we get done with that, we'll be looking at forming governance structures. They also want us to take a vote of all of the various stakeholders to say that this is what they want to do, which is why we're enlisting letters of support and resolutions from jurisdictions. And we do have a model resolution template that we have sent out to cities and Marion and Polk Counties that they're looking at. And if you all are interested in joining us, we could provide that model template for you as well, and you could consider whether or not you wanted to pass that. Once we get those pieces in place, then we want to actually jump in this year with the strategic planning and prioritization process so that we have things ready to go in March when we register, and then the application will be due probably about this time next spring in 2020. Then we have a transition year because HUD will then announce the awards in December, and then they told us the money may not even be in place until April of 2021. So we're looking two years out right now with what we're starting before we actually have that structure that we talked to you about. So our next steps again are to work with the jurisdictions to take formal action. We will be developing a memorandum of understanding that will include the charter for governance. We need to give that formal notice to the Rock, and we do need to involve Oregon Housing and Community Services because they assist the rural Oregon continuum of care and Community Action. Submit that documentation to HUD by the end of the year, and then set our priorities and apply for funding in the spring of 2020, and then many more things to do after that, which didn't fit on the slide, but if you want to see them, we have a large project management chart that we're working through. So again, very much appreciate your inviting us here and hearing what we have to say, and would welcome your questions and comments.
Casey, you have any for Jan or Jimmy or Sean?
I'm sure I will, but I'd love to hear your questions first.
Yeah, well, I was going to turn it over to Commissioner Stare.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here this afternoon, Commissioner.
Thank you. Question about current HUD contracts with our housing authority, how would they change or morph or stay the same if this were implemented?
So from what we understood from the HUD officials from Washington DC, because I asked that very question, what happens if we become a continuum of care in name, but we don't get dollars till a year later, and how do we interact with the rural Oregon continuum of care? And because those dollars flow directly from the federal government to your housing authority, those would not change until the dollars came to us locally. And then I think we're really operating right now on the same type of premise that they did in 2011 when we moved, when Marion and Polk moved over into the rural Oregon continuum of care, that we would keep things pretty status quo, at least initially, because we don't want to pull the rug out from any particular provider until we can build more resources, and then we'd be looking at how we pull additional resources in and put those together. So what he said was really that you wouldn't see any change, and then when they become a sub recipient, it would be the unified funding agency, whichever agency is chosen, whether that's COG or another agency, that would develop a contract for that provider.
And you mentioned benchmarks, what are those? That benchmarks, that basically they're looking at benchmarks in terms of rewarding for outcomes.
Okay, so that was Jimmy that mentioned that, and those are part of the scoring system.
So the scoring system, those particular benchmarks, they're broken down into several categories. One is just governance issue, whether or not you have the structures in place to make sure that the work is being done accurately, and to make sure that there are conflict of interest policies and that sort of thing being honored. But the largest body of points there that we're doing so poorly on in the Rock at the moment is actually data standards. So every individual that interacts with HUD funding has to go into HMIS, pretty much everyone. And if those HMIS entry exits, as they're known, the data records for each client aren't fully completely filled out, if there's missing information, if the outcomes associated with that client aren't good ones, for example, you spent housing dollars on them, and then six months later they just disappeared or were evicted, you get a red mark against your record for those sorts of things. So every step of the way, you're being evaluated in terms of your performance, and if your performance is poor, your score is lower as a result of that. The other thing I think too, it's important to say, that the housing authority dollars would not be affected by this at all. There are many HUD streams coming into a community, and so this particular continuum model is only dealing with the emergency housing assistant placements. These are for the homeless population for the most part, they don't include things like Section 8 and those other sorts of programs. This is just essentially for the projects that are funded primarily through YCAP at the moment, which is doing a really good job with the resources that it has, it just doesn't have anywhere close to the resources to deal with the problem that you have here in McMinnville in particular. So there are literally two dozen of these metrics that you're being measured and evaluated with. There are something called a 16 UDE, those are universal data elements, and if you put a client into HMIS and some of those data elements are missing, you're going to get penalized for that. So it's a massive scoring matrix essentially based on the performance of how the money's being spent and how you're documenting the successful outcomes.
And one more.
It's the accountability.
I'm sorry.
Can you provide, is there any documents?
I can provide a document to the Commissioners on for that, yes.
And I have one more question and then I'll, I'm taking, I'm taking over your spot of asking question after question.
That's right, he only gets one today.
Do we, do we get dinged if we have, because I'm on the board at YCAP, and I know that we've done everything we can to mitigate what's going on on dust in court, I know you've made reference to that, and there are people who've made a choice and said that they were not interested in housing services. There are a few who had taken advantage of those, but the majority had not. So would we get dinged for that population who's homeless by choice?
No, not at all. So what you're really being evaluated on are people who are placed into housing programs and your outcomes associated with those housing programs. So when you heard me talk a little bit about the coordinated entry program, all of those individuals go into HMIS as well, and pretty much for that population, which would include the people, many of the people that you're talking about there, as long as those 16 universal data elements are complete for each one of those persons, including things like their date of birth, their social security number, their racial and ethnic identification, all these other sorts of things, then you essentially get 100% of the points available for that sort of thing.
Okay, thanks.
Casey. It's really the Rock, right, that seems to be dragging, I mean, that's what you're suggesting, is that groups like YCAP could contribute to a positive score for, trying to get the things right, for a Yam Polk COC. Did I get all these acronyms right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the Rock as a whole, I think it's fair to say the Rock as a whole is very poor performing at the moment, based upon the feedback it's getting from HUD in these scores. We are essentially 30 points below the average, the consequential average of the weighted mean. And so the reason we're 30 points below is that our data quality numbers are poor across those 28 counties as a whole. So if we had a unified funding structure in place that could hold the programs accountable and to make sure that there were consequences for not doing the work that the way the federal government wants it to work, then those performance metrics would improve, those scores would improve, and we would grow closer toward the weighted mean. Again, a word of caution, there's no magic bullet here, it's going to take, you know, years for us to climb out of this hole, but at some point you have to start. And if we continue down the road that we've been on for the last 10 to 15 years, we're going to reach a position where we're not even, you know, right now we're scoring around 25 to 30 percentile in terms of all the COCs nationally. As time passes in the future, eventually HUD is going to get to a place where 95% of the scoring is based on those same performance metrics that we're doing poorly in right now. So that 25 to 30 percentile that we're essentially in is actually, the future of it is going to crater if we're not careful.
Can I add something though? I'm, I've been in government a long time, and compliance is important, but if you are just doing it for compliance, there's, in my view, you're missing the mark. You really ought to be doing it because you want to do the best job that you can and get the best outcomes for the constituents that we represent and that we care about. And in the process of doing that, if we do things at a higher quality and better, it's all going to come together. So I think, you know, we're going to get, getting things in the database correctly and all that, certainly that's very important, but it's important because we're trying to identify which people are homeless, which people we can help the best, where we can best put our resources, and how we can use those resources most effectively.
They're related, they're correlated.
Right, yeah, so you have a data-driven system, so.
So in a good functioning COC, small, you know, three counties or two counties or whatever, in a good functioning COC, it's not just the federal dollars that are sort of being coordinated in this way. That's the way Lane is doing so well, they're not just using their federal dollars in a certain way, they're using their state dollars, they're using what local commitment they have in a very organized and concentrated way to produce the best outcomes they possibly can. And I think Janet is 100% accurate that the reason to do this is not the money, the money sort of follows the good outcomes. The reason to do this is so that we can plan and coordinate it in a much more effective way than we ever have.
Yeah, well, I really appreciate some of the statistics that were up, the numbers, because I've done those on the, you know, the back of my hand, as it were, and so some of those numbers were very familiar, so thank you for bringing them up, because they were just literally running around in there.
Okay, thanks, Casey. You know, I don't have as many questions, I've read Lane Counties before, and I thank you, Commissioner, for all this information, it's great, it's great information, tells a simple story. You know, I'm fairly much a simplistic person, we can go over all the statistics, we do everything, but there's a couple of things that were said today that, I mean, appealed to me personally, and that was, what are the, you know, what are our concrete strategies? You have to have concrete strategies to be successful. If you have concrete strategies, the funding will lag, but the funding will come. And I've always been one of those, if you have good targets and you're good, you have good outcomes, that, you know, I look at it this way, it's like, I get tired of things when we talk about the homeless and we talk about the underprivileged. I get tired of this more talk and less action. I want to get to, I want to... I want to get to, I want to get to less action or less talk and more action because I shown you made the comment, it's a book sits up on the planet, sits up in the bookcase. If you start with a plan to set in the bookcase, that plan's always going to sit in the bookcase. So I think what is it like Nike, just do it? I think the other thing is I do see, and I don't know the answer to this, but at times, and I've been, a long time I've been in government, I do see turf wars building up sometimes. You know, wait a minute, this is mine, I don't want you to touch that. This is mine, I don't want you to touch that. And that's why I'm a firm believer, always have been, whether it be economic development, whether it be housing, whatever it be, that this, you get much bigger bang for the buck when you have regional, when you have regional solutions and regional strategies. Because if you take counties, let's say, let's say we take Marion Polk and Yamhill does something, and you put those three counties together, you can be getting five times the bang in the buck of each one of those counties individually. So I'm a firm believer in regional efforts. I think there's things we do right now that would be better off with regional efforts. And you look at when, you know, the jobs council, and we mentioned jobs council, you look at Lamont Workforce Partnership, you look at what we did with SEDCOR and them managing our, all of our economic development grants now. You take the work we do with AOC, the work we do with COG. And what it comes down to me, I say very simplistic, it's where the rubber meets the road. And if we can do a better job in a regional effort of putting all this together and get concrete results, we're much better off than doing it on an individual basis. So I really like this presentation, I like the way we're going. I personally, and I probably never will understand, and I still probably don't, I mean, I know when it was formed, if we take the, like the Mid Valley, Mid Lamont Community Action Program, we take the Yamhill Community Action Program. And I know when, you know, the Mid Valley was formed, and I know when YCAP, you know, was formed, it's like, why didn't we just have one community action agency? And when we did that, it probably made perfectly good sense. But organizations like that, doesn't make good sense now to have those individual organizations. I can't answer that question because I think there's, like everything else, there's advantages and there's disadvantages. But the fact is, this brings more providers together to get a common job done. I think myself personally, I like the continuum of care, of cares, so.
And I would like to see us join you. So that's my thoughts.
So Mary?
Go ahead.
No, I appreciate, I think we need to have further discussion and take a look at how the other partners would factor into this and weigh the work that's been done, the work that's being done. And as you mentioned, I mean, we've got so many different entities working on this, so many different task forces and subgroups, it's amazing. And so, yeah, it would be great to at least take a look at, take an inventory of what we're doing.
I think definitely you would want to do that. In our timeline, we're hoping to have the jurisdictions, you know, by late May, early June, if you, you know, if that gives you enough time to kind of think through that, it'd be a month, month and a half, so that we can, because whether or not you're with us is going to, you know, determine governance structure, who gets represented, how we meld it all together, whether we're just melding Marion and Polk providers and jurisdictions together, whether we're melding three counties.
So Janet, the first thing I think I heard you say earlier is the first thing that would happen would be, and you had templates for a general letter of support.
We have templates for a resolution.
For a resolution, right.
It has whereas clauses that primarily relate to Marion and Polk counties. So you could fashion that with your accomplishments and your issues that you have in Yamhill County. And then the now therefore be resolved that was recommended by the steering committee was, how does it go, that we would create our own continuum of care that could include Marion Polk and Yamhill Counties. So it already says Yamhill Counties, but the could include means.
We could do it by ourselves or we could do it together. Yeah, see, now that kind of lets us support it without really making the commitment.
So we're like going steady, but we're not engaged.
Or we're like married and wish we weren't.
I've been married so long that I'm just like, yeah, let's commit.
Take the time you need, but keep in touch with us about what your process is, that would be great.
I have one question. If we were to move ahead with this resolution, does that commit us? I know you mentioned that government, you said government usually has available resources in terms of people to commit to this as far as another.
Right, so that's a great question. So right now, the Mid Lamont Homeless Initiative is based on voluntary contributions. It's been Marion County, City of Salem, City of Kaiser, Monmouth and Independence that have been providing the dollars for the staff support. We're going to play with some formulas. And the question about whether it's voluntary or whether it's not voluntary, that there's been no recommendation on that. We would need to have pulled together amongst the jurisdictions about $212,000 by probably a year plus a few months from now. So that's what we're looking at in order to hire those two staff people that we talked about. And we can phase the staff in, obviously, we could do contracting. But right now, the dollars that are being contributed by those five jurisdictions are covering the staff support through the application phase through this upcoming year.
And those three positions would not be an ongoing cost to the three counties potentially either, that eventually at a certain point, once it was funded federally, there would be a planning grant that was associated with the COC award. And that would provide for those two positions. Maybe we could continue for a longer period of time to support the HMIS piece that I pledged to support. So, you know, it would really be a sort of one-year gap funding issue for those two spots.
During the time that we have no federal dollars, but we were in Maine.
We'll just take it out of our COG dues, that's okay.
Works great. Yeah, so the, and speaking of which, so that's what I wanted to say. You know, everything we do as a council of governments, if this is housed with us, is voluntary. We do not have any authority to force any of our members to make a contribution. I think what we're looking at is whether it would be more of a uniform assessment, voluntary assessment, or if it's just a key player assessment. And that's what's happening right now, is we've had key players step up and say, this is important enough for us, we want to put resources behind this, we want to do the study, we want to take it to the next level, to the next step. And when, you know, if it is the will of the region that the COG be the proponent lead agency, then, you know, I think there would be a discussion at the COG board as to how resources are gathered up, whether it's done on a pro-rata sort of assessment or if it's just based on a voluntary contribution. Because right now, the jurisdictions that are contributing, they're not doing it on any sort of pro-rata, you know, based on population or based on homelessness. It was basically what they could afford and what they were willing to put forward at the time politically for the effort. So, but rest assured, anything we do as a council of governments would always be voluntary.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
So Janet, you have any closing things? Or Jimmy, anything you'd like to say?
Give me some more numbers, Jimmy, it was so exciting.
Oh, Jimmy, he'll give you all sorts of numbers.
No.
Yeah, okay, well then, thank you. It was a very good presentation, thank you, thank you all.
How's Idaho?
We're not in the house yet.
Not yet?
The furnace is being fixed today, there's been water leaks, it's been.
That's why you're here.
That's right, smart lady, smart lady. Good to see you.
Thank you very much, Janet.
Thank you, Janet.
Okay, that will go ahead and we'll move on then to our Thursday formal session review. Attached to our agenda day was the formal session review and draft copy. Under old business, we will have the consideration adoptions of final conditions for that stock at 34-18. So would everybody like to move 34-18 to consent agenda?
I didn't think so, but.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, because that's the findings. So we'll leave that under old business. Carolina, item C1 under old business. Then we'll get to other business. First one is the authorization Yamhill County Parks to apply for Oregon Parks and Recreation Department grant. So any problem with the apartment grant, Mary, Casey? If not, we'll move that to the, let's move D1 to the consent agenda. Item D2 is consideration to authorize Yamhill County Health and Human Services to submit an application for, again, for the American Volunteer to Service to America, the Vista Partnership Project. Does anybody need any more information on that one?
Oh, no, just that this is a, we do this on a regular basis, having Vista volunteers. What we pay, it's what, $17,000?
That sounds correct.
Relatively small amount of money and they match.
Okay, so we'll move D2 to the consent agenda. Item number D3 is, and that's adoption of a board order initiating the process under ORS 373-270 to transfer to the city of Yamhill jurisdiction over the segment of Old Sheridan Road, and that's between 99W and Cypress Lane, and setting a public hearing on the proposed transfer for May 30th, 2019. So if we want to, we'll put that on consent agenda and have staff set in place the public hearing for that, for that particular date. Todd, is that correct?
That's correct. That was requested by the city of McMinnville. And the process, the way we've been handling it is when we get a request like that, we set up a hearing and we have to set up a hearing through a board order under the statute.
Right.
So this would be that board order just to set it up so that we would then advertise four consecutive weeks in the new register and have that hearing on the 30th.
30th of May.
Testimony as to whether or not we should relinquish jurisdiction over that segment of road, which is between 99W and Cypress Lane.
Okay, and then, so when would the board order actually come back to us for final adoption?
You would adopt this board order Thursday.
Thursday, this Thursday, if it's done.
If you approved of the, after the hearing, we would, if you voted for it, we would tender the jurisdiction to the city of McMinnville formally through a second board order. And then it would not become effective until they took action to accept jurisdiction.
Okay, sound good, Mary? Okay, so we'll move, we'll move D3 to the consent agenda. Item four, consideration to appoint Irene Launder to the Employee Safety Advisory Committee, ESAC, for a three-year term to expire on March 8th. I think that was a recommendation by staff to do that. So move, put that on the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item number five, consideration adopting Resolution 1904251 proclaiming May 2019 is Older Americans Month.
Why are you looking at me?
I was looking at both of us.
Yeah, you were.
You were seeing, I was, you know, I was looking at you to see if you were looking at me.
And I was.
So we'll go ahead and.
We could do older slash wiser, is that, would that be better?
Not always.
So we'll put that on that day, that board order, considering adopting the board order, then we'll have it, the resolution. Yeah, we'll put the resolution, come back to us. So that'll go under new business or under, under other, other old business?
Right.
Where do you want to put it, Ken?
No, we'd probably leave it under other business. We wouldn't move it to the consent because we're going to have to read it.
Right, right. So, okay, we'll leave, we'll leave then item number, we'll put item number D5 and we'll leave it under other, other business. Okay, D6, consideration of a letter by the Board of Commissioners opposing the use of face, safe reserves to pay for purse costs.
I don't know if you've gotten a chance to see the letter, you have seen the letter?
I've seen the letter.
Okay. And, and I don't know, Ken, if you wanted to weigh in in terms of numbers of, any numbers or as far as, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just that since it does impact government employees, that's where our workers' compensation has been relatively inexpensive comparatively, and we've been really happy with safe. But to raid those reserves would really put the.
I'm totally against it.
Okay, so if we would go ahead and if you would kindly agree to sign this, that would be appreciated.
What if we want kindly, what if we sign, but we don't kindly agree?
The only thing, I was like, Joe, do we, maybe we could change the wording to use of, save instead of raid, but then I decided, ah, that's what's.
We know what it is, we know what it is.
Because in the, in the letter, it says raid, but here it says use. I was just, it's, I'm always trying to like tone it down.
Well, this one, this one.
That's correct.
I don't think we, I don't think we're saying raid in this last updated letter.
Oh.
But it's a safe raid.
Oh, yes, it does say raiding.
We can.
Actually, I'm good with raiding. If you're not good with raiding, we'll tone it down.
I'm okay with raiding because that's exactly what it is.
Okay, so anyways.
As a person who's received safe refund checks for our own employees, it feels like the best thing ever to have this organization go, actually, we did really well, we don't need your, this money that you've already paid us.
It's a different scenario.
It's a confidence booster, is what I.
So then what we will do, what we will do is we'll authorize staff to go ahead and finalize, finalize the letter. And as the board, as soon as that letter's finalized, we'll sign it and send it in.
Well, we'll still have to take action on it.
Yeah, on Thursday.
Well, on Thursday, but that's, so we'll keep it on the consent agenda.
We're going to move it to the consent?
Yeah, we'll move it to the consent.
Okay.
Then once we approve the consent, you can do the, do the letter and we'll. Item number seven, consideration authorize Yamhill County Parks to apply for Institute of Applied Ecology Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Restoration Grant. And that's for the Kincaid Lupine Restoration at Deer Creek Nature Park, which that's a, that's a big one, getting that restored.
Can I ask Jared one question though?
Oh, sure, Jared, come on up. Thought you were going to get out with one, without one question, huh? Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just remember, Jared, thank you. I remember seeing some emails about, does this affect our mitigation bank? Can you explain that a little bit more? Like, does it affect us or is it in addition to?
It doesn't impact us as far as our mitigation, but it doesn't count towards, correct?
Right, it can't, can't work towards mitigation, but it's actually, the project zone is in the previous restoration zone. So it's a separate kind of effort.
Is it still up on the hill there where the rest, where the, near the other mitigation site?
On the side, where it slopes up that hill.
Yeah, that southwest corner. And if that, if we do get the grant for the boardwalk, it'll come up just to about that habitat. So it'll be a nice little segue over to the lupine.
Oh, we're going to get that grant, no question.
I'm all for it.
When the boardwalk is completed.
That's, that's the better way to.
Okay, thank you, I just, I didn't see that email, so.
And we've done similar type projects with Institute for Applied Ecology because I know we did some Nelson's Checker Mellow introduction out there at Deer Creek years ago.
There you go, bring it back, your old, your old title and your old work.
To clarify, this is their grant in Salem and Corvallis area. So we're just going to collaborate and partner with them.
So shall we move that to consent agenda?
Thank you.
Well, if they're doing.
I may as well ask it.
Yep, just to clarify, if it's their grant, we're not really applying for it?
We're not applying for it. I, this was to offer a letter of support.
Okay, we'll change, we'll change some, we need to update the language then.
Thank you.
All right.
We, you have to give permission though for them to.
Right, yeah, and then after that, we'll collaborate on.
Okay.
Send.
Thanks, Jared.
Letter of support for grant.
And then we do have one public hearing, and that's Doc at CTS 0119, and that's appeal of Planning Director's approval of a temporary health hardship dwelling for Gloria Dresky to care for Joe and Sue Roberts during the term of their health hardship. And it's a plan that an existing manufactured home is proposed and used as a temporary residence. So are we just going to hold that till Thursday to a public, to our public hearing? Just land use. Traditional, there isn't any such thing, is there? Okay, so that'll be under public hearings. Now, that'll take us time to announcements, but we're running late in the afternoon. We want to save our announcements till Thursday?
That works.
I mean, even though one of our commissioners was gone, three quarters of the meeting.
You act like I was having coffee or something.
Well, that's what Ken said, that's what Ken said.
Oh, no, no, no. Let the record chill.
Hearing no, meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned.